Requested a joint cleanup on Earth Day for the I seventy-eight ramp at Berkeley Heights. Uh, it's not in Providence. But um, no, maybe we could uh, contact Berkeley Heights, see if they wanna do something.
And that would, that wouldn't even be a borough initiative either.
No. It's a day, it's a, it's a dangerous thing. I don't, I don't know.
She's right. I mean, it's a mess.
It is, but yeah, I hate to have people out there. I know how people, there's so many accidents over there. Okay, uh, township of Chatham, uh, score more than management plan, uh, high vest, uh, board of adjustment. Uh, New Providence Cricket Club, um, they're inviting us from March twenty-sixth to the Washington Reservation. Unfortunately, we had the CSA pasta dinner that day. I'll be working all day.
With the Lions too.
Yeah, with the Lions Club, so. Uh, and Peter Weiss, action line for sidewalk condition on Central Springfield. And I know, uh, Keith is in, been in touch with, uh, the owners over there. Okay. Council business, uh, engineering, um, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine zero. A resolution approving partial payment number four for Franklin Four, Franklin Floors Incorporated. Amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the second floor bathroom project. Uh, the bathrooms are now functional, um, and the final payment will be made once the punch list items are completed.
Okay, finally, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ninety-one. It's a resolution authorizing payment of the attached bills, uh, payable list in the amount of two million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Some of the notable items were, um, the Board of Education's March appropriation for one million, three sixty-two, twenty-five dollars. Depository trust for one million, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred. Uh, that was our interest and principal debt payments. And then, uh, the March appropriation for the library was ninety-three thousand, three hundred. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash ninety-two, and that is the emergency temporary appropriation. Basically, that it resolution moves money between budget lines, uh, while we're still in the temporary budget.
Okay, we have, uh, some referral requests, RA eleven eighty-two for Robbie's World Foundation. Then we have eleven eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, and eighty-seven for Our Lady of Peace Church. And all the requests were properly reviewed and prepared. And we have, uh, a resolution for professional legal services for, uh, the Rita LLC. Okay, public works, um, Count.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine four. This is resolution amending professional engineering services agreement with NV five for the Safe Routes to School Engineering Design. So this is the resolution amending the agreement with NV five for the design services associated with the two si- two thousand sixteen Safe Routes to School Project. Uh, some of the areas include Hawthorne Drive, uh, from Cameron to Central, Crane Circle from Jones Drive to Morris Avenue. Central Avenue from Livingston to Verona. Central Avenue from Sabalum Road to Maple Street, Willow Street from Springfield Avenue to Southern, Southern Teminus. Direct access to the Salt Brook Elementary School. Now, this is just, NV five is one of the engineering firms that's pre-approved.
Right.
I, I reviewed the, the, their proposal with Bernadette. It's, they, they're extremely professional. I can see why. They're approved by the grant to do this, but this is just to get the project moving and get it shovel-ready.
Okay, community activities, Pete.
A resolution twenty twenty-three ninety-five is a resolution approving purchase order for field turf and the amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. This is for Warner Field under the Keystone Purchasing Network Contract, uh, two zero one eight oh one dash oh one. Um, this is a project that Councilman Kaminsky has been leading. You may wanna comment or elaborate on this further.
Yes, this is just, this is the, almost, we're almost at the final stage, right? So this is to purchase the turf.
Almost.
Almost. Uh, I guess the lead time for the turf to come in is about a month, so we'll get the turf in and then we'll install it, uh, clean up the area and, uh, the ball.
Okay. Um, bigger reports. Um, there was a, uh, a major fire last night at one sixty-five Spring Street. Um, it's under investigation and that's what we're getting thought about it right now. And since the chief is here, you have anything, Chief?
Related to that?
No, just anything that you wanna report on.
Public safety.
Yeah, I know, operations.
I have them.
Perfect.
I love the best.
Okay, uh, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. Uh, the Sustainability Committee has two things coming up, the Green Awards and the Green Fair. The Green Awards are by nomination and anyone can vote on these or anybody could submit. It's basically to recognize businesses and or individuals in our community for best environmental practices, innovative sustainability efforts. Someone who champions sustainability work, um, goes above and beyond New Providence. Um, so there will be two for businesses, one for, um, an individual. Nominations should be submitted by April seventh, and there will be, um, social media and information on that. And then mark your calendars for April twenty-second from ten to noon at Centennial Park. We will have our Green Fair. Um, the Historical Society, actually, the meeting is tomorrow. Um, all information can be found on their website. And, um, the annual dinner is also coming up. It's Thursday, April twentieth, six P M. at Vintage Tavern, and that's, uh, they always have a speaker. It's a really great event. Um, I really like that, uh, that committee. Um, there's some things going on with the downtown improvement district, so I'll have an update for you next meeting. And the Board of Health, um, I'm new to this board. Uh, it's the second meeting that I've been to. It's a great committee. Um, they do so much behind the scenes to provide information and to keep our residents safe. It's, it's a great committee. Um, ch-ch-ch-ch, one thing to take out of that last meeting was, uh, old-fashioned hand washing. Doesn't beat, it beats everything, I should say. So go back to your old-fashioned hygiene. Um, our success, and we had a very successful rabies clinic, um, the other month. So that's about it.
Diane, where do people put in those nominations for businesses? Do they do it on our website or where do they do it?
Their information will be going out, um, in flyers. It'll be going out, uh, through social media, through the what's happening in the rec. Um, so basically look at our website. It'll be on our website and it'll be on our Facebook page.
So some tape on our website too.
Yeah, um, everything is normal for and, uh, ready for, or progressing normally, um, for our target date at the end of May.
Um, attended a, a very brief Board of Education meeting last night. Uh, major things covered were the tentatively approve, a tentative approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four school budget. Um, at this point, it gets sent to the Executive Council Superintendent, uh, for approval. Um, the, our borough, the borough, I'm sorry, the Business Administrator, James Testa, also spoke briefly about the upcoming bond sale, which will be held on, uh, the auction on April nineteenth and the closing date of May tenth. So again, it was a very brief meeting, but those were the two main topics discussed.
Okay.
Uh, Senate Board Meeting was canceled for PDK forty-four and P. That hearing is scheduled for the twenty-first. Uh, we just received revised traffic plans and revised, uh, work plans, so, uh, yeah. Have any input on, uh, on that project, please come out and, uh, put it in.
Good, thank you, Mayor. Um, capital review, I'll just run down the list. Um, we are going to be having a meeting, I think it's next Tuesday, uh, to just start going through that and see what's out there. Uh, Diversity Advisory Committee, uh, we had met with them last night. Um, we will be coming soon to council with our calendar for the year. Uh, the first event coming up is, uh, Unity Day. Um, it's, uh, what was formerly known as Race Unity Day. We work with this with, um, high school seniors and, or high school students. Uh, they're actually the ones who facilitate the event, uh, so more information will be coming about that. They have great plans for that. Um, as well as the rest of the calendar. While on Diversity Committee, I just wanted to give, um, a shout out to a member, a student member, Nick Velasquez. Um, he just was recently named by Union County as an unsung hero, uh, for his art efforts across the county. So I just wanted to give him a shout out. Um, you know, again, our Sean is doing great things.
He actually was one who made the posters.
Yeah, the poster for us. Um, Mental Health Advocacy and Advocacy, Edu- Advocacy and Education. Um, as you said before, we're gonna be meeting tomorrow. Uh, they did receive grant money from the county. Um, that we are looking forward to bringing this initiative, uh, to the public. Uh, so we will be meeting and discussing that, and again, a calendar to follow. Uh, Diane covered the Board of Health. Um, Municipal Alliance, we had a meeting last week, also at the same time as the Board of Health. For the reason why we divided and conquered, um, and again, they're coming up with their calendar as well. Some of their items, um, are also going to be mental health-related, so they will be working with Mental Health Advocacy and Education Committee. Um, working on things together to get as much programming out there. And on a side note, uh, somebody brought this to my attention and I thought it was very interesting. Um, so the Murray Hill section, actually, a lot of town used to have residents who worked at Bell Labs. Very different time of innovation, very different. We had a resident, uh, who just recently passed away. His name, um, was Morris Tannenbaum. Um, and he's really instrumental in the developing of silicon chips and silicon, using silicon in transmitters, uh, which made them, you know, much more usable and much more innovative in technology. So he was really considered one of the fathers and of technology in that front. Uh, so I just wanted to mention him. He remained in New Providence the rest of his life. Um, ninety-four years old. Um, fascinating history. I brought this over to the, um, Historical Society, so I think they'll be posting more about it. Um, so I just wanted to mention him and I thank him for all the innovation that he brought. And again, that was something that we had in our town for many, many years.
A silicon chip. You should see the smile that brought that.
As the engineer.
As, as the engineer, I just, I just have to make one correction.
Okay.
Silicone in transistors, not transmitters, but that's moot point.
And I did have that written down. I said it wrong, so.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Nobody but you would know.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Um.
Okay.
Not, not much to report on my end, Mayor. Uh, just to, just to, uh, uh, highlight what, uh, Councilman, um, Councilwoman, um, Jeff Roy said, uh, diversity meeting yesterday. We met the young group of high school kids that are doing it, and as Dean said, they'll be coming presenting to us. I think we'll be extremely impressed with how they're planning this. It's gonna be a much better, much, as good as the event was last year, it's gonna be better.
You done?
Done.
Lisa.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Finance Committee is getting ready to present the budget, um, at the end of, at the, at the next council meeting, three twenty-eight budget presentation and introduction. And it will be, uh, adopted hopefully at the equally tango. Stay tuned for that. Beautification Committee did meet. They have some really good ideas for Centennial Park, but we still need to, um, kinda weed our way through that a little bit and, and see what's feasible and what's not feasible. It's, it's a, you know, if you wanna just, you know, we were saying before, kinda just throw everything against the wall and see what sticks, but we'll, we'll try to get some stuff.
Well, I know, I know the Community Activities Department is gonna be dealing with a lot of renovations.
Right.
Centennial Park, so.
So I feel that beautification really does overlap with some of these other committees. Um, so I'm thinking that we might work together to accomplish some of these goals, you know, as opposed to working in silos. Um, the Library Board was quiet. We did not meet. Uh, the other thing I wanna mention is, uh, Mayor Al mentioned it before, is three twenty-six. This is a shameless plug for the Community Service Association. Uh, the pasta dinner is back on the twenty-sixth. We wrapped one hundred baskets on Sunday, so it's gonna be awesome. Al will trade in his mayor hat for, uh, his chef hat on Sunday, and he'll be cooking. So, um, a hundred percent, you know, all the proceeds made by CSA and raised by CSA go back to residents in town, so.
So some good things is that we wanna congratulate the girls' basketball team, winning a state championship. And the New Providence Hockey Team, which, you know, G L has something to do with that too. But, uh, you know, uh, quadruple overtime, the longest state, uh, championship game in history. So it was, um, I, I, I had something to do and I couldn't get it to stay off my phone watching it. And it kept going into overtime, and your son had to hit that crossbar. He could've ended it right then and there. So, but we wanna congratulate them. We're very, very proud of our youth. And as you can tell, our youth not only played in athletics, but community service and everything else. So the arts and academics. Okay. At this time, oh, and we don't wanna, we also wanna wish everybody happy Saint Patrick's Day. Being Irish, you know, I, I'd better say that. Yeah, what?
Bernadette wants to talk.
Oh. So I, I just wanna update you guys that, um, last week DPW took down the clock at Centennial Park. I don't know if any of one has noticed. Um, the new clock is in. We're waiting for a few parts. Um, hopefully it may get installed next week, weather depending. Um, with the change of time over the weekend, um, we realized that one of, one side of the clock at, um, the park here, uh, sorry, clock in Veterans Park being replaced, the one here in Centennial Park. One side of the clock is not working and one side is, so we just ordered a motor for it today through Clock Company. So hopefully that will be a quick turnaround, and when they're here for the other clock, they can do it all at once. Um, as Lisa said, we are going to introduce the budget at the next meeting. I think the original intent was to introduct, introduce it at tonight's meeting, but we were waiting for state aid from, um, to be able to complete the budget documents. Um, that being said, there is not enough time legally between the introduction and when we had to adopt it on the eighteenth. So we're either going to have to change our meeting or we're going to have to add a meeting just for, uh, the budget adoption. So, um, I'll work that out with Jim and send you guys, um, something probably tomorrow. Um, he was actually, I'm reading the emails live between him and the auditor, so, um, something will have to be worked out with when we can adopt it, but it won't be on the eighteenth. It'll probably be the twenty-fifth.
I think it was interesting, like, uh, we finally did get a state aid number. It's ten billion dollars in surplus in the budget in the state. We got a whopping nine thousand dollars worth.
Yeah.
It's, I don't, I, I'm still looking for that equity thing coming.
What do we do with the old clock? Should we auction that off?
We have it.
It's, uh, so, actually, that, that clock came from Per- Perenna's Park Mall. And, uh, Nat Conti was the one who renovated that mall, and he called me up. He says, Al, you want a clock? I said, what are you talking about? He says, a tower clock. And I said, well, I wanna, I wanna look at it. And so we go down to South Plainfield, Ken DeRoberts and I, and the clock's all printed up real nice, and it's green gold. And he says, uh, with the white face, I said, sold, so. Who knows how old that clock is?
That's interesting. I didn't know.
Uh, it came from Perenna's Park Mall and, um.
We couldn't fix it. That was part of the cost.
Couldn't find the parts.
Because of the age, even the company who, who manufactured it didn't have the parts to fix it.
I think that would look really nice in my backyard.
Well, if you can, you can bid on it.
That's all I'm saying.
You have a dollar? Okay. At this time, we have public comments. Anybody wishing to address council, please get their name and address. Yeah, nevermind.
Hello.
How you doing?
Doing good. How are you?
Just wonderful.
So, um, we wanted to, uh, to invite you. We are conducting a holy, uh, celebration. Uh, and we're opening up for the community to join us, so we would love to have you guys, uh, come to that event. I have shared the invite. Uh, we'd love to have you guys come and celebrate. It's, it's with powdered color. We would appreciate if you guys come, uh, for that event. Um, the other thing was, uh, on, uh, you wanna talk about the women's?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you so much. I just wanted to just let you know that we finalized our T-shirts for the, um, New Providence Cricket Club, which is like the black and pink, obviously.
That's the one I voted for.
So we've decided on that, and, uh, we've got a tremendous response from the women, uh, living here in New Providence, uh, Berkeley Heights, and, you know, one or two from the Summit area, which is wonderful. And, uh, looking forward for the season. I would like to thank the council and the recreational department for, you know, organizing and actually allocating the, uh, field for us on Saturday mornings, and so we start our season from the twenty-ninth of April onwards, which we are so looking forward for that.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, so that's what we wanted to share with all of you. Thank you, and, uh, we look forward for all of you to come and celebrate the holy, the festival of colors.
I would love to, but I'm committed to the CSA cooking, uh, that day.
They didn't allow you.
It's on the twenty-sixth.
We will bring the colors to you, Al.
And I'll be there experiencing.
Lovely, yeah, that's good. That's wonderful.
The only other thing that I wanted to bring up was, uh, when we had last come up, we were, uh, we were concerned about the turf being used, uh, for, for building the pitch. I didn't hear anything after that, so I just wanted to see, like, where we are with that, like, is that, a- at this point, is that something that has been resolved or is there still something outstanding?
Uh, I, I can answer that for you. So, uh, we were going back and forth with the engineers. Um, they did have your sample piece of turf. We settled with field turf, which is our vendor that we have purchased all of our other turf from. Um, we're per, it's, it was on tonight's, um, agenda for approval. They have assured me that it is the same height, the same thickness, the same everything as the piece that you have supplied to us, so we're gonna order it tomorrow morning. Um, and it's about a four-week turnaround.
Got it. Okay. And what timelines are we looking for the actual work to happen?
So at this point, once the pieces, once the turf is ordered, they've told us that it'll be about four-week turnaround time for it to get back to us. Um, and then once that happens, the installer will install, and then whatever remediation work that has to be done on the field itself would happen, and then we would open the field.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. One last thing, uh, that I wanted to share was, like, since, uh, New Providence Cricket Club is gonna, is partnering with Red Department to run the cricket camp. We have been getting a lot of inquiries from people outside the town. They have been hearing about, like, so it is close to you guys as well for supporting us, and it is certainly creating a lot of, kind of, uh, information being shared across in all these neighboring towns. Um, I have had people reach out, like, they were excited to register for the club and, uh, and be part of, and basically having kids participate in the, in the camp as well, so. So just wanted to share that, so it is all good stuff that we've been hearing about, like how New Providence is changing and supporting a different kind of a diverse sport over here, so thank you for that.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's all.
I love those shirts.
You know, they were, they were giving us different colors, but we offered the black and pink.
Yes, I like.
Hello, um, my name is Matt Pietranton. My wife, Patricia Kansler. Um, first, we'd like to express our gratitude to Mr. Mayor and the council for providing these meetings, where you can inform us what's going on and to allow us to ask questions and to express our opinions. Um, we've lived, we currently live at two fifty-five Union Ave. We've been here twelve years. Prior to that, I lived next door at forty-nine Union Ave. I've been there for. Um, this, you know, this comes to our attention that, uh, there's discussions and plans in the work to put a sidewalk, uh, on our side of the street on Union Avenue. Um, we were not, you know, this is gonna affect us and other homes. This sidewalk is gonna be from Klein Boulevard to Hillary Place. Uh, we found out about this and we didn't, we're not aware of it, and we looked online and saw this is a meeting held by the Traffic Department, and Traffic Department meetings. We've reached out to them to discuss what meetings they have and how, where these discussions were, but they haven't returned our calls. They haven't gotten back to us. I mean, we would've attended the meetings to express our views and, uh, what we, you know, about this proposed, uh, sidewalk. So, but we haven't seen any scheduled meetings or anything, so if there was a meeting, we would like, we would've attended and liked to go. Now, this, currently, there's a sidewalk that exists on Union Ave. It runs from Springfield Avenue to just short of Mountain Ave to, uh, Martine's Place. So this little piece of side, our side, is not necessary. Uh, again, this is gonna go from Klein Boulevard to, uh, Hillary Place. Um, also, this proposed new piece of sidewalk is gonna be very dangerous and it's gonna be unsafe on our side. Uh, in the, in the, uh, time that I've lived here, there have been at least ten or so more accidents that have occurred in our, in this little section where, uh, cars and trucks have come down the road, gone off the road, and crashed and created some, you know, very dangerous things, so it's not safe. Uh, also, um, I've gone out and have noticed, uh, ruts in the, in mar grass and other lawns where cars and trucks have gone off the road, onto the lawns, and actually went back off and, uh, just went on their way. And so actually, when I'm out working in my front lawn, um, you know, cutting grass, doing, you know, mulching or trimming grass, you know, I'm working there, but I also have one eye what I'm doing and another eye on the street, because the people come down there and they're just not the, aware of how they're driving or what they're doing, and possibly they can go off the road. So, um, I find that this is, this proposed plan is, uh, gonna be very dangerous and it's not safe, and it's, like I said, it's not necessary, because a sidewalk currently exists, and this little piece of sidewalk would be kinda meaningless. And I feel that the town would be, would better spend the money doing this to providing something else of importance to the town, so.
Well, you're lucky the chief is here.
Yeah.
And then, uh, can you set up a meeting with him and Andrew, sir? Okay, the Traffic Department, you set up a meeting? And, uh, in fact, if you could give Bernadette or the chief your information and, and you can, you could talk to the traffic, uh, commander.
Okay. I believe, did one of you reach out to Sergeant Diamond, you know?
Yes, we did. No, we haven't heard back.
Uh, he had forwarded me. I'm, I'm not in the building all week, um, so I didn't wanna reply without speaking in person.
Okay.
But we'll be in touch with you in a second.
I have a question. What stage is this proposal in right now? Just talk, consideration?
Uh, I.
Do you, do you wanna come up?
Sure, yeah.
How far along is this?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's not, not nearly as far as you think it is, so, you know, in all of our examinations of, you missed a really good, uh, energetic conversation about traffic just, uh, forty-five minutes ago.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, no, we would've, like I said, we would've attended.
Yeah, I think what you're referring to is the traffic circulation, uh, meeting we had in January, so.
Yes, we saw it online. We viewed it.
Yeah, so, um, that, that's a general discussion on traffic safety throughout the borough. The discussion point is what we have, what we have currently planned for that intersection there, and what we think is a more feasible plan. It's a discussion at this point.
Okay.
It, it is, there's been no engineering done. There's been no progress made. It's, it's, it's really in the testing stage.
Okay. The, the point that should've been, uh, raised is that, okay, if there was discussions and it was gonna affect properties in the area, people should've been made aware of that so they could've attended the meetings.
That's not necessarily the way it works.
Okay.
Uh, we, we just, we would talk very extensively about any, any place in, in the borough. It's when we start getting back to the planning stage and actually formulating what we wanna do, is when we would solicit the input of the area residents.
Before you actually do it.
Yeah, 'cause we may discuss it. It may not be feasible for us to do. It may not come to fruition, so we still are starting.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Uh, we, yeah, probably for the borough, for all our challenges.
All right, no, very good. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask one, can I ask one question before? I recall, maybe while the chief is here, when, when I was walking around knocking on doors.
Yes.
You guys had a comment on, um, those slow-down things when you back out of your driveway. Was that resolved or?
Yes, you did. They've extended the road. They've put some signs and some blinking signs, and they've reduced the speed limit. And thank you, because it's been very effective, and we have noticed a very good improvement. So you've done, we, we appreciate the job that you did for us. Yes. Not, not as fast as they used to. They have, it's slowed down and.
No, Alex always wants to see the sign.
You know, it's, it's funny, 'cause people say, you brought it down to twenty-five.
No, we appreciate it. Yes, you had to, yeah.
I mean.
Yes, yes.
I know, I know.
Okay.
You're up, Sarah.
Alright, good evening. Uh can I show a slide?
Uh if you do it quickly, it's.
Okay. Okay. Can I have the TV?
Are you on TV on?
Just give me your name and address. Sure, Sarah Erins, ninety-nine Crest Road.
While, while she's getting it set up, uh Diane and I have this ongoing joke. I, on, on Union Avenue, those signs that say twenty-five, I really appreciate when they tell, thank me for going.
I like to do when they go in that South Street, Chris is naughty or nice.
Oh, yeah, they, you know, they don't do that anymore.
No. I'll tell you what, though, those, those signs truly do work. Cuz you go over and I go, knowing that South Street, you go over that hill and you go, oh wow. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, thank you, Bernadette.
Good shot. You gotta hit each one, huh?
That one worked, alright. You should be able to see it? Well, I think. Yep, it's on?
Yeah.
That one's. We can see this.
We're good.
Okay, alright. Sorry to make you turn around.
It's okay.
I uh, so I've been up here before, as you guys know, with the retaining wall damage to the easement area of, which is within my property at ninety-nine Crest Road, and I just wanted to bring some pictures to light, and there's been some recent developments in the past couple weeks. And I wanted to make everyone aware, but I am seeking for a more collaborative discussion on this, and I'd like to ultimately seek your help to go to the next step, which I would, I have some suggestions for, but for those of you who haven't been to see the damage, pictures don't quite do it full justice, and I think Councilman Kogan might attest to that, but uh there was significant damage where it knocked over the retaining wall and the fence that was flush against it, which is right leading into the culvert area. And this is just some pictures of this. We do have a solution, which FEMA, because this damage was done during Hurricane Ida, am I right?
Ida.
Yeah, Hurricane Ida, that FEMA can cover ninety percent of this through the, the borough projects. And I'd gotten estimates from various engineers at certain points that estimated about fifty thousand dollars in cost, which I cannot afford as a homeowner myself. Um and it would be re-engineered, ideally not with uh wood tire, um wood tire, railroad ties, but uh with concrete block and code compliant fencing, which the fencing that's there today is actually not code compliant with uh flood and emergency management uh rules. Uh because it can catch on things, it's a chain link fence. Um but there was a, so talking about how FEMA can cover this and why, um there's a survey that was done by Colliers through the borough, commissioned it, that um it clearly shows that the wood retaining wall and the chain link fence are both within the easement line. Um and they are purposely for storm, um storm water and flood control. Um there's even reference on the Collier survey for work of the Salt River, or Salt Brook River space. Uh there is a deed from nineteen sixty-two, which uh where the borough was granted um ownership of the easement and control and maintenance of it, so the borough is actually responsible for maintaining everything within this easement. And it does, uh it's very purposely, this easement was very purposely built for that stormwater and flood control area. So while the deed itself does talk about, um I forget the exact terms, but it's a sanitary sewer and stormwater easement area. Uh it, there's an open concrete culvert, which is definitely not for sewage. At least I hope no sewage is going through there. But the borough does have a really good record of maintaining everything within the easement, and since we've been a homeowner since nineteen, uh not nineteen, what am I talking about, two thousand and fourteen, and when my, right before my second daughter was born. Um but the Department of Public Works had come out and replaced a whole section of the chain link fence, about sixty feet of it, um to raise, put a new higher fence in because there was a safety concern with two little kids or one little kid and another on the way and just little kids in the neighborhood. It was very easy to be scaled at the height it was at before, so the Department of Public Works came out and replaced that whole section. There's been fallen trees on the back sections of the fence where um the, the Department of Public Works literally next day came out and, and this is when Jimmy Johnson was the head of Department of Public Works, but he came out next day and uh, or the, the, the group did and repaired the fence, took out the tree that had fallen into the uh easement, but certainly cleaning up shoveling, everything that gets in the way of potential and preventing potential floodwaters or stormwater um going through this culvert. So there's been a lot of cleanup that's been done or maintenance that's been done in the past. Uh FEMA does have a public assistance program and policy guide, and specifically in this guide, it talks about how uh it, um all the language points to the fact that the borough actually does have the legal responsibility, and it's determined by uh either the juris, either having the jurisdiction over the area or the legal authority to conduct the work related to the request. So there's jurisdiction over the area as evidence from the deed, and there is a legal authority to conduct the work as evidenced by the deed as well. Um and further in the FEMA guide, it talks about how an eligible public facility is one that um the government owns or has legal responsibility for maintaining, including any flood control. And is very clearly a flood control area. Um so the second problem we come across is that there was recently a um there FEMA was asked to do an eligibility determination, and this eligibility determination, the information that FEMA was provided was um not necessarily the whole picture and could have been a bit, create a bit of a misunderstanding with the FEMA representatives. So this is the language from the FEMA determination letter in which they denied this being an eligible project. But the challenges are that most of this, um the determination was based on an opinion of council that mentioned that the um, there's an opinion that the project is not, or the borough is not legally responsible for the repair of the facility. Which, and then just going through all the documents I just mentioned, there is the ability for the borough to take that legal responsibility and by definition can and should. And yes, it's located on private property, but it is within the easement that the borough has control over. And um it was mentioned that there, it, it's a sanitary sewer easement when it's, which it's not sanitary sewer, it's flood control and stormwater. So you can see how it kind of leads to this uh misunderstanding potentially, but um it, there was mention to FEMA that the borough does not maintain the facility, which again is not necessarily the truth. Further on, there was mention that um uh that FEMA had mentioned that the borough did not provide titles, deeds, or similar documentation, and admitted that it did not maintain the, the easement area where the, the um wood tie retaining wall and the fence are. And um does not, the borough does not have legal responsibility, and therefore that's why the claim is denied. So there is an opinion letter, there were some misunderstandings and maybe extrapolations that were taken out of context, and there was key missing documentation. So this is the listed documentation that was provided to FEMA. The first one is an email that really had no information in it. Um the other two, the next two in line were FEMA site review documents, so someone from FEMA had come out at some point and just taken notes and filled out handwriting on a, on a form of some sort. And then the third, the last one is um correspondence from the borough through council. Uh but the key missing documentation here was definitely the Collier survey that was commissioned by the borough, which clearly shows that the retaining wall is within the easement line and and also the deed from nineteen sixty-two, which clearly says that the borough has the right and, and authority and responsibility to maintain everything within the easement. So there is the ability to fix this and we have a solution and we can file an appeal to FEMA to get this money for this project. Uh so it's, it would include, including the proper documentation and correcting, making sure that the correct information goes across and, and essentially providing proof that the borough is legally responsible. Uh we have a short window of time, I wanna say it's the end of the month, month to March thirty-first, to get this appeal to FEMA in, cuz this is a short sixty-day window from the time that their initial decision was um provided, but I, you know, and a couple thoughts as I'm thinking about this. Okay, so I guess the existential question is like, why not go for the FEMA funds? Like, why? Why would the borough not wanna get the money for this project to go forward with? Because if we, if we don't get the FEMA funds, I can't fix it. Um the problem will probably get worse over time. It's certainly a safety hazard, as uh Councilman Kogan can attest to. But then, you know, what happens? So the problem gets worse, maybe my garage slides into the culvert, so it's a bigger problem. But who's responsible then? You know, and how does, how do I keep my family safe? And what about saving for neighbors and pets and other kids scenario? And certainly, there's a lot of curious kids in the area, I mean, mine. There's talk about the green project, I think you were talking about, Councilwoman Blisca, before, like, my kids were just cleaning up garbage in the woods behind our house like early, but they climb all over and they do things, right? And so even just going along the side of my house, now as you saw from those pictures, it's a hazard and somebody could slip, you know, hurt themselves. But certainly, we don't want blockage in the uh the easement itself, because next stormwaters that come along, it's a big, big problem for everyone in the area. Um so, you know, and then the fact that borough has definitely claimed maintain and claimed responsibility and maintained the fence as well, which is flush against the retaining wall, so if nothing's done and no FEMA funds are obtained, how would the borough replace the fence?
Oh, I gotta, I gotta refer this to your council. He's the uh, he's the lawyer.
There's, there's a lot to unwrap here. And there's a lot of statements made, or there's a number of statements made that I disagree with Mayor, Ms. Erins, and I've had conversations with her. Um I, I appreciate where she's coming from, but the primary issue that I have with what she continues to say is that the easement deed puts responsibility on us. She's putting up the language there. What that gives us is the right to go in and repair, operate, maintain sanitary sewers, storm sewers, pertinences. It's not the obligation or the responsibility. I'm also impacted, I'll say, in my opinion, I've been dealing with this since at least last July, my involvement, and it goes before that. Kevin Boyer is the, did the engineering work for us. Kevin Boyer was of the opinion that if we're gonna do something, just remove those wood uh railroad ties. So what, what's being sought here isn't to replace what's there. It's a significant upgrade to what's there, uh which isn't necessary for the easement purposes. The, the, from what my understanding is, and, and I believe you put up a portion of uh the statement from FEMA, and I, I don't know who was at the meeting, November eighteen, twenty twenty-two, but they made the point, uh which is accurate, this, this easement came to being in nineteen sixty-two. We don't know who put that wall in, we don't know when it was put in, and frankly, we don't know why it was put in. But there's nothing that says the town put that wall there. Now, the town did put the fence in in nineteen sixty-eight. Uh and I, I take it has replaced and done some work. That's one thing, but this, we're talking about much more than a fence here. Uh we're, we're talking about a concrete retaining wall to replace these old, and I, I have to presume these are fifty-year-old railroad ties that are there, that I don't think, well, Kevin Boyer, and I, I have to be guided by the engineers, it's not my opinion, that these railroad ties, which is what this retaining wall is, serves no purpose. Now, I'm not against giving assistance to the Erins, but I, accurate information given to FEMA, that was my point. I don't want FEMA coming back and saying we gave inaccurate information. The Ms. Erin says, well, we didn't give them the easement. We gave them the easement language, and the easement does not say what she wants us to claim, that it's our responsibility. That's not what the easement says, and that's what FEMA found. In terms of what uh maintenance there has been, again, I guess there's been some work, and now we're talking about, what, sixty years? We cleared a tree, we, we replaced a fence. I don't know that we did anything else. And I'm talking again about legal responsibilities here.
Well, I know upstream, we put the two sister pipes in under the culvert, and New Jersey Transit did that.
Right.
At our request.
Right.
And I know DPW goes in to those culverts with the front end loader and cleans them out. So water, water passes.
That's fine, and, and, and that's, that's our area.
Is it my understanding easements are just so we can get to it? We don't own it, right?
That's correct. It is a right to use property for sanitary sewer drainage. I figure what the other issue or purpose of it is, but that's, that's what it talks about. We haven't had an issue, to my knowledge, at least certainly in speaking with Mr. Boyer.
I heard, I heard a couple of things. I heard there were, there was information that maybe not was accurate, but was not included, that's what I heard.
Not included and um saying it's a sanitary sewage easement is not giving the full picture, right? So, so while the deed, Mr. Rizzo, does say sanitary sewage and stormwater
And drainage purposes.
Drainage and, yeah, it has a longer term. I don't know anywhere in that easement that the project was actually for anything sanitary. Maybe, I don't know.
There could be sanitary pipes running underneath, we don't know.
Yeah, could be, could be.
But, but now I also heard that we put in the fact, we don't know who put the retaining wall up.
Correct.
We don't, we put a fence on it. We've been maintaining the fence, we've been maintaining, I guess, the trees, which is important, right? Obviously, that system is there for a reason, right? You want water to run properly.
We don't maintain the trees. If they fall into the culvert, we remove them.
The fence goes back to the original builder and that is on the plans.
And they probably did that for safety reasons for kids, right?
Does, does the fence sit on the retain, on those um railroad ties?
It's not on top of it, it's flush against.
They're next to it.
So there's no way to, to have the, the fence there without a retaining wall.
You need something to anchor it into.
Yeah.
I think one of the problems too is if that fence collapses now, that becomes a fishing net in, in the culvert, you know, and that, so there's definitely, apart from the, for you and your kids.
Yeah.
It's, it's actually uh, on a big, on a big storm, it could really back up and catch literally every branch that comes down that culvert.
So I know the last time I was here talking, the, the uh issue of whether the borough had legal responsibility came up, and well, you have a point that maybe the deed is for the right to the easement. Uh legal responsibility according to FEMA is determined by uh whether the applicant requesting the assistance, meaning the borough had jurisdiction over the area, which the deed provides the jurisdiction over the area.
Which they were told.
But they didn't have the deed.
They don't need the deed, they were told that it's our easement, they understand what that is.
They were told that the borough doesn't have legal responsibility.
That we didn't have legal obligation, that's right, our easement, they understand what an easement is.
So Paul, you think uh an appeal uh is, might be detrimental because we'll be giving wrong info, not wrong information, changing information?
It's not detrimental, I think it's a waste of time. That to be blunt, I mean, you know, this is, we, we have put in hours and hours, we did a survey, we've done engineering, we've done legal work. I, I gave accurate information to FEMA, they made a decision. I understand why Ms. Erins doesn't like the decision.
I would argue.
But at this point, you know, now, now, now I'm supposed to go back to FEMA and basically say, well, wait, you know, what I gave you before maybe wasn't accurate, so here, this is, this is what we need to provide you. Um, you want me to do that? It's your direction, I'll do that, I'm just telling you, I just, you know, we're spending hours and hours of time pursuing something, and as I made the point, you had the right to make a direct application to FEMA way back when Ida and all this happened, and you chose not to do that.
No, that's not true, actually.
You, you said that you looked at it, it was complicated, and you didn't pursue it.
I did not say I didn't pursue it.
Did you pursue it?
I did.
And what happened?
It did not go anywhere.
What do you mean it didn't go anywhere?
So conversation for another time, but.
No, 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 it's not.
Yeah, we're diverting the conversation here.
That I feel is for your benefit, and you had a right to pursue it, so I'm asking the question.
Mr. Rizzo, because the damage was not to my house.
So FEMA denied you?
Uh, they gave me a, um, allowance for like an evaluation of like a hundred and fifty dollars. That was it.
Can I ask a silly question?
Yeah.
I'm sure that, I just was wondering, homeowner's insurance, did that come into play at all?
I tried, it didn't, no, I have flood insurance too.
But it's, so the fence, the, the fence is technically on, in your backyard, so to speak.
Um.
Would qualify as an other structure.
Yeah, based on the, the State Farm insurance language and, uh, the, I even looked at the, the flood insurance too, because there wasn't any damage to a structure, uh, basically what I'd come away with, understanding, and I had put a claim in, I think, too, but, uh, what I came away with the understanding is basically if my garage slides into it, then I have a claim. So, then they would replace the retaining wall, but otherwise, they don't just replace retaining walls.
Sarah, did you have an attorney that, that was looking into this?
Can't afford to pay him.
So what are our options?
File an appeal, please.
I can file an appeal, saying here's the survey, here's the deed itself.
If you understand, if they deny it, they deny it, the appeal.
Right, well, if we can give them accurate statements and information.
And, I, I, I've been with Mr. Rizzo for, for decades.
Yeah.
He always gives accurate information, and I mean, I'm, I'm willing to have you do it, okay, but, you know.
It's not gonna hurt anything.
Yeah, I don't know, you try it.
I, I think it's important to know, though, that our engineers have given us a quote that is six figures to fix that wall. So when, when we start talking about the borough getting involved, the DEP will get involved, our engineering firm will get involved, and then the job will have to go out to bid, so where, as a private homeowner, you might have been able to do it for fifty thousand dollars, that job is not gonna be fifty thousand dollars for us to do. So I think that's just important information to, for you to have, because even ten percent of that, maybe higher than what you would have paid privately.
Yeah. I mean, if there's a way I could do it, I would, but it's also, you know, um, within the easement, and whose responsibility is it to maintain that easement?
Well, if it's an easement, it's not our property, it just gives us the right to use that property, get in to clean the culvert.
Well, it was.
There's easements all over town, and a lot of people have easements, like they have a sanitary sewer in their backyard and, and things like that. It just gives us the right to get back there to maintain it. It's not a property.
Ms. Aaron's, can I ask?
Yeah.
When, when you had council, your council had represented that you would agree to be responsible, if, if we got the FEMA funds, you would be, agree to be responsible for anything FEMA didn't cover, are you still willing to do that?
Depending on the amount, potentially after a certain amount. Um, but I would even be more willing to put something in writing where, I don't know, some sort of, I don't know if indemnification is the right word, but, uh, taking responsibility going forward, because if it's built properly, it's ideally never gonna happen again. And if we want to take the, uh, the, the question off the table as to who owns it going forward, and just put it in writing and state it, I'll take responsibility for it.
But we have to get there.
Right.
And it, so we need the easement, so we can maintain the culvert.
Right.
It's, it's not a matter of who owns it.
No.
That, that's.
But the wall, the wall I'm talking about.
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I, I would, if it's not too detrimental to our, call it, reputation, I definitely, I definitely would support, uh, doing an appeal. Doesn't, it doesn't seem like just additional information is needed to be put in, i- i- if you, if you deem so.
Well, I disagree with that, but I, but it doesn't hurt.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Obviously, we defer to you as a power.
If we're in agreement, we, we go ahead and file appeals, I think.
Thank you.
Sure.
The cost is definitely a concern, so.
For sure.
Yes, that is a concern.
You know, just so then you're aware, so, at fifty thousand dollars, which is private, now it becomes, like, according to that set, like a six-figure.
Easily.
Easily a six-figure thing. You just want to make sure you're not then going beyond the hook for something that's even more unaffordable.
Right.
That's what scares me.
Just so you understand, borough's paying for this, it's time for the appeal, and probably Danny's gonna have to be involved too somehow.
He's been involved. Do you still have the paperwork from when you applied to FEMA? That may be a benefit if I include that, that you've, you've tried yourself and been denied.
Sure.
If you would send me that?
Sure.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You had, you had said the engineer was out there and said that they could take it down?
Kevin Boyer said, you know, if, if we're gonna be responsible, I would just take it out.
The rest of the properties, Matt, don't have the fencing, it's literally culvert.
I'm thinking about.
The whole way down.
The issue for someone getting hurt with the way it sits today.
Oh, yeah.
Shouldn't do that, anyway.
I.
But it's not ours.
But we, if, if it falls into the culvert, then we have to take it out.
So.
It, it's, as, as Ms. Aaron said, I, I was out there, I know Chief was out there a while back, it, I, I slipped, I, I slipped just looking at it, and there's not much room between the house and the fence.
A couple feet, yeah. Okay. Anyone else wish to address council? Seeing no one, I declare the public comments closed, we go to formal action, need a motion for items one through seven, please.
So move it.
I'll second.
We'll go, please.
Ms. Blisca?
Aye.
Mr. Disarino?
Aye.
Mr. Comiskey?
Aye.
Mrs. Jeffry?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Okay, motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, so be it. Thank you all for coming, and, uh, happy St. Patrick's Day.
And if anybody needs something to do this weekend, it's the, uh, Spring Musical at the high school.
Aye.
Lots of tickets available.
I talked to, um, Tom Kane, Sunday. Alex, I talked to Tom Kane, um, Sunday, on the Raway, the Raway yacht club.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah, Jack said, he said, he said, there's actually a yacht, there's actually a yacht club, he thought it was like.
Ain't running nothing! So, um, I told him about that project with the Army.